Correct, the last one.
Yeah, I think it speeds up.
Deborah, are we live?
Now, we're on.
Are we on microphone?
Mics are on.
Good evening. The October 2 meeting in the Planning Commission is now in session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, may we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham, Marie McFarland, Sean Keir, Miles Lessinger, Steve Griffiths, and Patty Crowen and Doug Bryson are absent and excused.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, September 18?
I motion we approve the September 18 meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I see.
Okay. Did you get that, Kate?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Are there any public comments or non-agenda items? Seeing none. No final orders and resolutions? No public hearing or deliberations tonight? We do have some old business, and this is a discussion workshop of our sign code revisions. So, Richard, would you like?
Yes. I'll take it. What I propose to do tonight, you've all got in your packet the draft signed regulations, I just wanted to just walk through from beginning to end. And if, as we go through, if you have any questions or comments, just go ahead and interrupt And I just want to preface it with one thing, is that most of the changes in here are grammatical. There's a lot of changes, but most of them are grammatical, with one exception, I think there's no reduction in the amount or kinds of signs that are allowed. A lot of things are added for clarity, and so it looks like maybe more changes than it really is. But, as I say, there's a lot of grammatical changes, a lot of changes to try to make things a little more clear. First thing, on the first page is a completely new section on the statement of purpose. That comes in large measure from the International City, actually, the City Attorneys, International City Attorneys Association, what's it called?
International Municipal Lawyers Association.
Right. International Municipal Lawyers Association Model Ordinance. The only thing that's really different from what they have is the very last part, number five, where we would just say, one of the purposes is ensuring sign design that builds on the image and the visual environment Lincoln City wishes to promote. Then, on the next page, the first paragraph is just grammatical changes, then a new paragraph that starts with properties in the Ocean Lake Plan District, Nell Scott Plan District, and Taft Village Core Zones. It's just saying that, drawing the attention to the fact that those zones have additional or different sign requirements than what's in this chapter, so just trying to draw people's attention to it.
I had a suggestion to make. I don't know if it would be useful or not, but would it make sense to put a chart in there saying what those differences are, so somebody could see that right here without having to flip back to another section of the ordinance?
Possibly. Might, it might be a big chart.
It's too big, don't do it.
We can, we can take a close look at that.
Or, at the very least, have reference to where those would be found.
That's, you know, it could be a reference to the section numbers, yeah.
Richard?
Mm-hmm.
Quick question on the signage. Is it always going to be different in Nell Scott and Taft than the rest of the city? Or is that something you're moving towards commonality throughout the city?
It probably, well, I can't say always, you know, never say always. But the intent is that Taft, Nell Scott, and Ocean Lake be unique and each be, be different from the rest of the city. That was the intent when they were drafted. You know, it's always, that, that intent may change, I don't know. And then, actually, there's several pages of definitions. There are things that are added, taken out, and so on. The very first definition is a new definition, is address sign, and that's something that designates the street number, street name, unit number, or unit name for identification purposes. That replaces some other definitions, lumped them all into one. Some people may say that's a content-based definition, and in fact, it is, but it's appropriate, given that it's necessary for safety purposes, public safety, so ambulance and police and whatever else knows how to get there, knows where they're going. We added a definition of attached sign. Again, just for clarity, balloon sign is a new definition about a lighter-than-air, gas-filled balloon, either supporting or, or containing a message. And that is used later, actually, a balloon sign is something that later in the ordinance is prohibited, but just trying to make clear what it is that's being prohibited. Banner is redefined to be more inclusive and more clear. A lot of that, again, draws from the Municipal Lawyers Association. Directional sign definition is changed, in that some things, like the first part, this is a sign that directs the reader to the location of public or educational institutions, or to the location of historical structures or areas, or to parks or buildings. That is proposed to be stricken because that would be covered by governmental signs, which is another kind of sign. And this is just saying it's, it's signs directing pedestrian, cyclist, or vehicular traffic, or vehicular traffic to an entrance or exit from a parking lot. That is a change from what we have, because what it exists now is to a premises or a parking lot. And the proposal here is that this be limited just to the entrance to a parking lot, which would be appropriate for, again, for safety, so people know how to get, get into a parking lot. I propose striking the word premises, because chances are, you don't need a directional sign to tell you where the front door is, so.
So, under government signs, we would still have signs that would indicate where the museum is, or where the community college is, things like that?
Yeah, those are things would be governmental signs.
All right.
Yeah. Then, the proposal is to strike two long definitions, one for display surface area and one for district or zoning district, because while the ordinance contains the definitions, the terms are never used in the ordinance. Then, there's an addition of a definition of flag. We have an exception in the ordinance for flags, they don't require a permit. This is an attempt to make clear what a flag is. And the key thing here is that it's, it's, the dimensions or the relationship of the, what's called the hoist and the fly, the hoist is the height of it, and the fly is the length of it, of a flag, of 1 to 1.7 to 1.9, so that it's a rectangular sign, a rectangular piece of cloth or whatever, with a particular relationship of basically height and length. The official dimension for the U.S. flag is 1 to 1.9. Other flags typically are a little bit smaller, and again, it's, the intent here is specifically to exclude some things that people may say are signs, like you've seen what I would call a feather banner, a long pole with a, with a narrow but tall fabric on it, they're, proliferated a lot lately, and this is trying to make clear that those are not flags.
Is there a limit on the size of a flag that could be flown that would depend on the height of the pole, or?
There's not one proposed, there can be, some places do that.
You might want to think about that. I've driven through towns, huge, huge flags flying in different areas of the town.
Car dealers, for some reason, seem to have huge U.S. flags up.
Yeah, they do. I don't know why that is.
Didn't the Shiloh, when they developed the casino there, put a big flag, U.S. flag that was really large?
I don't know. Of course, the, Shiloh didn't develop the casino, they just developed the motel down there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I know there's the, was it Quality Inn across the way here? Has had a big sign, a big flag, I haven't seen it lately.
I haven't seen it in a couple of years, I think.
Does, does the reservation land, the casino land, does that fall under these guidelines too, or are they separate?
No, no, they're separate.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. Also, I've got a couple photos in here, and these are the, just the first photos that are stuck in there. Probably will be others and different ones. Most of the photos that are in the draft right now are things that I've downloaded from the web, and so there may be copyright issues, so I'll be replacing them with, with photos that are legal for us to use. But I just wanted to show you the kinds of things that we're going to have. Other definitions, the freestanding sign have been changed to, again, just to be more Garage sale sign was changed to take out the standards for the size of the garage sale signs, that appears elsewhere in the code. Added the definition of government sign.
You do have a little typo, I think, in the first line of the garage sale sign?
Say again?
Means, means a sign located on the premises, right?
Well, the, actually, it looks, the S is crossed through, but it doesn't, it's not clear, but it is crossed through. I noticed that earlier when I was looking at it, I had to, had to check it, yeah. Ground sign is, just some more words added to make it clear, which is what it's referring to, to distinguish it from a, an attached sign.
Still similar to a freestanding, it's just...
It is a freestanding sign, actually. Yeah.
But you have freestanding crossed out, the ground sign is still a freestanding.
Yes, it is.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
I apologize. Yeah, the, is that going to stay like that? Am I a misunderstanding?
That's what I'm proposing, yeah, that the word freestanding be eliminated, although it is a kind of freestanding sign.
Yeah, okay.
If you look in the definition of freestanding sign, the last line says freestanding signs include ground signs and pole signs. Illuminated sign is a little bit of grammatical change, a little bit of clarity or something, but an additional line is added just to make it clear that, that both, a backlit sign and a sign that is itself, well, a backlit sign is an illuminated sign, just as is what you might think of as a, you know, just light shining through a translucent or transparent sign face. And then, there's some photos that shows examples of internally and externally illuminated sign. The one in the upper left that says boutique, that's what I call a backlit sign, that, I would say that is an internally illuminated sign. The two bottom photos show signs that are externally illuminated, and there's arrows pointing to the, where the lights are on those. And I also draw attention to the, the middle sign on the left, the idea there is that neon-type signs are illuminated, so considered to be internally illuminated. And then, there's some inflatable sign examples. Well, there's a definition added, says inflatable sign, a sign that is inflated with air by other gas, by a blower, or other means, and so on. And then, there's examples of a couple of inflatable signs in the photos. And this is added because later on, they are prohibited, and again, is to make clear what is being prohibited. There may be additional photos of other kinds of inflatable signs.
You know, excuse me, the kite festival has all kinds of balloons or inflatable signs, I think, for a day or so during the kite festival. Am I mistaken on that?
I don't know. I don't recall seeing, I mean, they put it, they have a lot of kites up, I know that.
Yeah, but they have all kinds of things flying in the air there, and across the street by the motels, and the little strip center next to Lee's, they seem to have things...
Kite store.
Yeah.
They're kind of like windsocks, perhaps?
Yeah, they're just little wind propellers.
They've been, the kite shop there has, has things out there all the time, there's like whirligigs and those kinds.
Yeah. But sometimes they've, I think I've seen big, tall balloons like the picture on the right here has during the kite festivals.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if they are, I don't know if the city has put them up, or someone else has put them up, I just don't know. I only, I can only think of one, one or two times I've seen them in the city, but it doesn't mean that they weren't there, I can only, but I, it wasn't at the kite festival that I happened to notice them, so, but it's possible. And assuming that, that is, that is happening, you have a concern there, you want to allow them, disallow them?
For a one-day thing, I don't think it makes any difference, and by the time you cite them, the festival is over. I can't remember exactly when I've seen them or where, but I think I've seen them in Lincoln City.
We could jump ahead to sign, the definition of sign, and it doesn't seem to include kites, because it says that a sign is fixed to or displayed directly or indirectly upon a building, structure, or land.
So, on the public beach, they could fly one, and it's no big deal then, during events?
I would think so. It's not, it's not fixed or displayed directly on a building, structure, or land.
Well, I think later on, kites and windsocks are exempt, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then, maybe that takes care of it.
Richard, with the...
That takes care of it.
Yeah. With the inflatables, do they, do the businesses that, to, to use something like this, do they need a permit?
Well, what this, what this, what this does is prohibit inflatables.
It prohibits, totally.
Yeah, what it will do. Now, that raises the issue, of course, of the spider.
Crawls across Goodwill?
Yeah, crawls across Goodwill every, about this time of year, every year.
I thought that was live.
So, this...
So, this is not in effect yet, but that would be, just so you know, the impact, that would not be allowed. So, then, we have three definitions that are removed. First one, mall, because it really doesn't reflect what malls really are, and there's no need for it anyway. Memorial signs are tablets. That is a content-based sign. And motel unit signs are replaced with the term address signs, so there's no need for that anymore. Then, moving signs, there's a definition added for moving signs, and that is just added to distinguish them from flashing signs, both of which are not allowed, so. On the next page, the definition of nameplates is removed, or is proposed to be removed.
Richard, can I ask a question?
Sure.
In a previous paragraph, mural is included here.
Pardon me?
Mural.
Uh-huh.
I guess my question is, why would a mural be defined as a sign rather than a public art project?
Actually, I think murals are exempted.
Oh, all right.
So, it's saying what, what would be exempted?
Yeah, they are exempted. Mm-hmm.
Do you have to submit a mural design, or?
No, we're not, we don't judge aesthetics.
No, but, but like, I'm going to throw this out there, I could, on my business, paint a mural of dogs playing, but that kind of...
Yeah, there, and that, that's always an issue with murals, you know, is it an advertisement or, or is it art? I think if you painted a mural with dogs playing and it said, you know, doggy daycare, at least the doggy daycare part would be a sign.
Sure. Okay. Interesting.
Murals can also be political statements, so I think that you're, you're walking into somewhat dangerous ground if...
If you start regulating them?
Yeah.
Well, you think of, like Newport has a lot of murals on various buildings down there, and it's just, you know, Coast Guard helicopter and fishing boats and what have you.
Yeah.
I know when they first started going up, there was some concern about that, you know, about it was, was unregulated, well, maybe something that doesn't need to be regulated, but...
I guess my course, if they're exempt from permits, and I would think this would be very rare, but if a mural appeared on a building here in Lincoln City that was offended in some way, or people thought was really an advertisement for the, what, the business that was there, is there, is there a recourse some, anyone could take, or the city could take in examples like that?
Well, there's just normal code enforcement, if it, if we believe it to be a sign and not mirror, or at least, not a mural, or at least in part a sign and not a mural, then we can go through code enforcement on that, and either require a permit or require it to be eliminated, depending on the circumstances. And people can always complain to code, to code enforcement, and they're quite good at following up.
But he raised a specter of offensive, and quite possibly, that could be...
Could you speak a lot of Gary, I can hear you.
Yeah, I said, the question of offensiveness was raised, and I've seen samples of some, not here, that are extremely offensive, but when you don't have any control at all, you really have no control at all.
We do have something about, we prohibit obscene signs, and...
It's a mural.
Yeah, but obscene things in general are not allowed, and it's not just under the sign, I mean, but it's a, it's a tough area to go into. You know, I think there's a famous Supreme Court case, or one of the justices has said, "I know it when I see it." You know, can't define it, but I know it when I see it. It's just a tough area. I mean, there's, there's, there's art, and it's, at some point, you can go over into something that would be considered pornographic or whatever. In fact, some pornographic things have been displayed as art, you know, in museums and stuff, so. Not a rabbit hole I want to go down.
I know.
Okay.
There is a definition proposed to be stricken of nameplates, and we do have a, in a separate place, we do allow residence signs. We don't call it a nameplate, it's just a residence sign up to two square feet. And right now, we allow nameplates with up to two square feet, so it's the same thing.
Do PRDs, are they required to have signs on them indicating?
Yes, they are, and we have an exception in here for signs that are required by the government don't count.
So, that's, okay. And are they visible from the street at all?
They're supposed to be.
You might want to look at that, to see if they're, what other communities are doing in regards to signs.
Well, actually, yeah, you bring up the ones that, you showed me a picture of, one that actually has the contact number, and then the maximum occupancy, and number of persons, and the maximum number of vehicles, which is...
And you can read it, walking by or driving by in your car?
Yeah. What we require now, actually, is, it needs work, because it just says, you have to have a small sign with a, with a contact information, and some people have taken that quite literally, and we, and we have suggested to people, to certain organizations, they might want to increase the size of their signs to make them, make them readable, but you raise a good point with that, yeah. Proposed to strike the definition of place signs, because it's covered by other kinds of signs elsewhere. The portable sign definition is changed for clarity purposes, and also to be inclusive of specific kinds of signs, that people think of, like sandwich board signs, A-frame signs, swinger signs, and similar things, and we'll have illustrations of those to show what kinds of things we're talking about.
Oh, that's a swinger's.
And there's a definition in the current ordinance of something called portable temporary attraction sign boards, and that's a term that's used nowhere in the ordinance, so we're proposed to strike that. Definition is added of the term print, and this comes largely from the Municipal Lawyers Association, just to add meaning to a term that appears frequently in the ordinance. Real estate sign, the way it's defined, is a content-based distinction, and we're proposed to take that out, take out the content-based, instead of saying it's for the purpose of advertising to the public, it's just saying you get a sign while the property is being marketed. We don't say what it should say, what it has to say, so we take...
So, that's open-ended, and there's not a date limit on how long it can be up?
No, you know, and obviously, there's a loophole there. I know there's a property in town that's been for sale for more than 20 years, and it's, but it's, it's got a sign on it, it has had it that whole time. But, yeah, there's a loophole there. The idea is that being for sale in good faith, and, and that's obviously a judgment call, but try to put some kind of reasonable limitation on it.
Is there a size limitation, maximum?
Yes, it's 32 square feet on commercial... Yes, it's 32 square feet on commercial properties, and I think four square feet on residential. Add a definition for resident sign, as I mentioned earlier, that replaces the nameplate sign definition. Then there's a, in the existing ordinance, under the definition of sign, there's a long explanation of how you measure sign area. It's hidden there, I don't think anybody would think to look, okay, what, what size sign can I have? And let's look at the definition of sign to find that. So we're proposed to take it out of there and put it into the conditions part of it, so people can find it more easily. Then, under sign repair, some minor clarity changes, but also an addition of the term, the sign repair, in the case of a non-conforming signs, replacement may only be with materials that are identical to what they're replacing. That is what we currently allow in the, in our non-conforming part of this sign ordinance. I've proposed in this ordinance an alternative approach to non-conforming signs that would remove the necessity for that, that particular line. Because the way, the way our ordinance is, is written now basically allows non-conforming signs to continue in perpetuity. Because you can replace structural parts, if it's, you know, we got a, got a an eight-by-eight wooden pole, you can replace it with an eight-by-eight wooden pole, once it gets rotten, or, you know, a steel pipe, you can replace it once it rusts, and this, the, the proposal that we'll get to later would not let you do that.
Do you want to change may with must, and those two? Replacement must be of comparable materials only, and in the case of non-conforming signs, replacement must be only with materials that are...
Yeah, could be, yeah, could be must. One thing that raises, actually, one of the issues in here that I'm sure will come up with the city council, is that in a lot of places, I've taken out the word shall, and replaced it with the word must. And that is actually something that legislative drafters are, are moving to, with the idea that that's more clear. Because the shall, in some ways, says, "In the future, that'll happen," but now, what? So we're not saying it must be.
When was the current code adopted last?
Well, it's, it's been revised a lot over the years, and it's, largely in its present form long before I got here.
Ninety-four?
Probably, probably in about eighty-four, eighty-five.
So it's time for a cleanup?
It's time for a hard look at it, yeah. Again, because there are a number of things, like I mentioned, with the real estate signs, that are, that violate the Constitution, so... And I want to make it clear, the content-based distinction is, the question that comes up, if a sign advertising that says a piece of property is for sale is okay, why isn't any other sign at that same spot okay? And that, so it's a freedom of speech issue. So why do you only allow one sign, one kind, but don't allow other kinds at the same time, the same place, the same size, that kind of thing? So what we're trying to do is eliminate, among other things, we're trying to eliminate those, those content-based distinctions where they're inappropriate. So again, I mentioned, like, address signs, yeah, that is a content-based distinction, but there's a good reason for it. And you're, when you have a compelling governmental need, which, you know, public safety, so the ambulance and police and fire know where to go to, that's allowed. But in other cases, you're not, not allowed to do that. Speaking of which, the next definition, the temporary political signs is proposed to be changed to temporary election time signs. Now, actually, this gets us into the whole issue of temporary signs at all. Last night, the city council passed the first reading of a, of an ordinance that would be outside the land use, outside the zoning ordinance, relating to temporary signs of various kinds. The idea being that all temporary signs would be moved to, I guess it's Title IX of the, of the code, and would no longer be in this Title XVII, which is the zoning code. So that, a lot of the things relating to temporary signs, including these temporary, what we're now calling election time signs, would no longer be in this part of the code. So that, but this was written before that was proposed, so that's why some of the temporary things are still in here. And I'm assuming that next Monday, the, the council will adopt it on second reading, and then I will need to make the changes to this, to take out those temporary sign provisions.
Do you know, or can you speak to what's, what that's about to us, the temporary sign change in council?
City attorney can. Oh, the city manager asked me to write an ordinance to address the temporary signs, and the fact that the political sign definition was referred to content, and we needed to fix that. And since it does not involve land development, it doesn't really need to be in the, in the zoning code, so I was simply trying to address those things that don't need to be before the planning commission. Temporary signs aren't really something you need to deal with. You're dealing with signs that are, you know, monument signs, and larger things that require permits, not a piece of paper or cardboard stapled on a stick that's jammed in the ground for 30 to 60 days. So that's more of a code enforcement litter kind of thing, not really a, a land use thing. So, for example, one of the restrictions in the code now says you can't have signs on undeveloped lots. Well, that makes sense, because signs in land use are typically accessory uses, so you can't have accessory use without a principal use, that'll make sense. But if we're talking about cardboard on a stick around an election, or, you know, something like that, that's really not the level of accessory use that we really care about in land use, so...
So currently, political signs are not allowed on undeveloped lots?
Yes, technically, that's, if you read the definition of political signs, it says you shall comply with all other applicable, applicable provisions of this code, which is essentially the prohibition section of the code. When the prohibition section says things like you can't have flashing signs, or moving signs, or signs that imitate traffic control devices, it also says you can't have signs on undeveloped lots. So one of the things that, you know, by separating it out, we're not going to carry forward the prohibition on having temporary signs on undeveloped lots, because they're just going to be there for a short period of time.
I remember when the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District had a sign in, I think it was 2008, no solar bees, and a, kind of a slash through the solar bee thing. And I think that was for an election, or to mobilize the lake community. Is that legal then, if it's not an election, that the neighbors put up like a sign that was the size of a a real estate sign for residential property?
We do allow certain sign, certain size signs for residential properties. We don't regulate what they say, or what they can say, it doesn't, you know, they can, you can put up, if you, if you meet the size requirements, you can put up a sign, if it's political or whatever, anytime you want. And also, then during election season, you could get additional signage of, of specific sizes, and it can say anything you want it to say. So, you know, it would be, it would be legal if it meets, if it meets the size requirements and the timing requirements.
Under the new ordinance, is there a limit on the number of political signs I could have on my property, as opposed to a vacant lot?
We don't have a limit on the number of political signs.
Okay.
Election time signs, I guess I should say.
I believe, you know, and the reasoning, I guess, is that, of course, during, the signs during election time can say anything, okay? "I like beer" is a popular thing right now, but if, if you were to want to address, because we want to encourage, you know, people to participate in elections, if, if you wanted to address each and every subject that was on a ballot, that's going to be a pretty high number. I've seen, like, for example, the International Municipal Lawyers say, "Well, you can have one sign per quarter acre," you know, "or X number, depending on the issues." I don't think we want to get into the, counting the number of issues on the ballot. And nor do I think we want to calculate your acreage and decide how many signs. If it's an election time, and you want to express yourself, whether or not it's "I like beer," or "Vote for whoever," I think you're going to be allowed to do it, as long as you're following the dimensional requirements for temporary signs.
Okay, then on the next page, striking the definition of traffic or other municipal signs, that's been replaced with the definition of governmental signs. Wall sign is reworded and simplified. Window sign is, the term has been added to, for clarity. Then we get in actually, then finally into the permit requirements. There, again, the, the measurement of allowable sign surface area is there and stricken out. And that's just a glitch, I could not get that to delete. So I don't, I don't know why, so it's there, but it's, it's also stricken.
It's a monument sign.
Then, let's see. The, on the next page, which, depending on how you look at it, it's either page 11 or 18. It's 18 of the packet, 11 of the ordinance. The first two paragraphs are stricken because they're moved elsewhere. And then the, the next significant change is that language that I've tried to strike twice is, is actually included here, is where it's supposed to be, showing how sign area is measured. One thing in there, in C3, the very last line, talking about a sign that has an indefinite border, like something painted on a wall, for example. The way the ordinance is presently written, you measure four inches outside the lettering, and that's, that's how you determine the area of the sign. And the question is whether that's appropriate to include things that, there's four inches outside the actual message. So on a, on a, a sign of any, any length, that four inches becomes pretty significant in terms of square footage. So, question is whether we should keep that, because we can measure just outside, just, you know, like a rectangle enclosing the letters, period. It can be the sign area, rather than a rectangle four inches outside the lettering.
Which, that might make sense, just to do it with a lettering?
That's my inclination, is to do that.
Can I ask number two? Can you, I can't visualize what, what is meant by that.
Well, you can have a, a sign that's two-sided, it's got messages on both sides of the sign, or the, the two sides aren't, aren't parallel, but they diverge a little bit, up to 45 degrees, we say that's still one sign.
Got it.
Beyond 45 degrees, it's two signs. Then, let's see, the next page, we take out the requirement for sign identification, putting numbers on the signs. We stopped issuing the numbers years ago, and may as well eliminate the requirements, as we don't use it anymore. Then there's a long list of exempted, exempt signs. They're exempt from the permit requirement, and we're trying to make sure this, they're not just exempt from the ordinance, they're exempt from the permit requirement. And that's, that's a, it's been our practice to say that it's just the permit requirement, we want to make that really clear, that that's all it is. You're still subject to all the, the limitations elsewhere in the, in the code. And we've added address signs, because that's, that's the, you know, a new definition, just to make clear that's, that it is exempt. Then we have a provision for construction signs, it's number three. And the question I raise is whether we need that exemption anymore, that's a, a sign that's on a construction site. Typically, that's something saying, you know, either, you know, this, this wonderful building's going up, and you know, you can, you can lease space now, or this is being built by so-and-so. A construction sign doesn't, but it does, we don't say that it has to be any of those things. You can have a construction sign, period. And it's basically, at the time, something is under construction, and it can say anything it wants, you want it to say. We don't say what it has to say. Question is, do we want to have such signs? Have a, have an allowance for a sign while something happens to be under construction at a site?
When I'm walking through the neighborhood, and I see a home that's being built that I really like the way it's being built, or the way it looks, I know who the constructor, who did the construction, and if there's a construction sign there, yeah. So I think...
I, I kind of think they do it by good practice, it's just they advertise that way. It's a good way to do it, I don't have any problems with it.
It's a good way to find out who to call too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't like it.
If there's a problem.
Stop making that noise.
And I won't be around long.
I think that's a good reason for letting them have construction signs.
I, I guess I just questioned that the government sign allowance would say that you have to post your building permit, for example, okay? A, a sign that you're required to have on a property by the government is a government sign. If you have a building permit, it's usually going to identify the builder. Otherwise, what you're talking about is not saying, okay, let's, it's nice to know who the builder is, because you can walk up and look at the building permit, and, or you can call the city and find out who the builder is. But what we're saying is, if you leave in a construction sign, it doesn't mean that you'll necessarily get a sign that advertises the builder. You could have a sign that says "I like beer," or anything, because we can't dictate the content. So it may be great to say, hey, I like this, and I'd like to know who the builder is, but that's not what you get now, in this content...
Not necessarily what you get.
Yeah, not necessarily what you get in a content neutral. Now you just have another allowance for signage, and it may not be the sign you were expecting.
If you, if you are allowing a sign on any residential lot anyway, wouldn't that qualify as being that sign?
Well, all properties have an exemption for a two-by-one... Well, all properties have an exemption for a two-by-one sign.
Right.
All residential properties, all commercial as well, could have a two-by-one sign. So, anybody could take that and write whatever they want. This house constructed by, you know, Joe, or, you know, whatever other message they want to write.
So, it's really covered...
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
Well, there's, there are allowances, yeah, there are, are allowances for other sign opportunities, but we're not dictating that if you are, if your house is for sale, we're not saying that you need to put the realtor's name and information there, you're, we're just saying, okay, that's one of the instances in which you're allowed to have signage, and it doesn't have to be a real estate sign. Unfortunately, that's where we are with this content neutrality, we can't dictate what the sign is.
But if you want your residences to just have the one small sign, they will use that opportunity in different ways, depending on whether their house is under construction, and they want to let the contractor advertise, or whether they are selling the house, or whether they don't have anything else going on, and they just want to give their opinion on something, right? So...
I, I'm, when you look at the International Municipal Lawyers' example ordinance, it just has a, a sign when your property is for sale, a sign when it's a period of time before the election, a sign when, you know, you're just construction occurring, a sign when, you know, the sign, the sun comes up and the moon goes down, you know, it, it becomes this long list of, you can have a sign for this, a sign for that, a sign for this, a sign, but we can't tell you what sign. So, now you're having allowances for all these multiple signs, and they maybe don't have anything to do with what you originally thought. So, I'm, at some point, maybe some of these sign, it'll be a good idea to have this, need to go away, because we're just adding more allowed signs. And even when it comes to political sign, like you said, we didn't even put a number, maximum number. So, you're just gonna have a lot of signs, it's up to you, but...
So, if we struck it here, then we, you'd need to, well, if a construction person asked, they could put a sign up, like, they can't, if it's within that certain dimension, right?
With the permission of the owner, and if it meets the other time, place, and manner requirements, yeah.
So, if I had a house, and I was adding a second story, and I wanted to sell it, and it was election season, I could have all of these signs in my yard.
You could have an allowance for, really, actually, during election season, probably an unlimited number of signs.
Okay.
That's enough, huh?
That's a lot.
But that's, you know, that's, what, how many elections, do we have two elections a year usually? May and, May and November, so you get a hundred and twenty days for that.
Oh.
And then, um, you know, if you've got it for sale, it could be forever.
You know, I, I, maybe I should wait and talk about this later, but if you had, if you put a time period on your signs, a, a real estate sign of, say, a hundred and eighty days, and then they have to take it down for thirty days, or something like that, it would discourage people from just putting up a sign that they want to leave up permanently. It may also disadvantage them in that, whatever period, it may be, maybe it's only five days or something, but it would be one way to discourage somebody from just putting something up and leaving it up forever.
One approach.
That's one approach.
I mean, you could, I, I mean, again, the temporary sign thing's going to council, but we haven't put in a limit, but you're right, the, you can have an unlimited number of political signs. And, yeah, for a hundred and thirty days, maybe, because you get five days after the election, you're gonna, gonna at least have as many signs as you want. And is that a bad thing? Not in terms of the First Amendment, to express your opinion, in terms of visual clutter and distraction to motorists, and, yeah, it's a bad thing.
What about, okay, so after the five days is up, is, are people, and they're, they're not being taken, say it, somebody's got a hundred and forty political signs on their property, day six after the election, are they getting fined per sign, or just like, here's a five dollar fee because you were bad today?
No, it's a Class B violation.
Okay.
And that's a thousand dollar fine, up to a thousand dollars.
Is that per sign, or just per property?
No, I think each sign would be a separate offense.
Okay. That needs, that needs to be a little more clear, because I think the willy-nilly-ness of signs would not be so willy-nilly if people understood that, that could be up to a thousand dollar fine per sign.
But one concern I have, being who we are, and that's, we're a tourist town, do we really want the clutter look, you know, whenever we have an election? I would think we probably don't. So, is there any way that can be addressed?
I don't know if we can help it, we have one road.
You can limit the number, can't you?
I, it's...
Could we limit the number if we wanted to?
There, there are, it's not really recommended to limit the number, but I can address it with the council, and just pass along the concern. I, again, I've seen, you know, formulas based on per quarter acre and things like that, but that gets, makes it kind of cumbersome. Remember, we're talking about signs that are exempt from permitting, so you're then putting on your code enforcement officer to be out there calculating the square footage of lots, and figuring out how many. And what if, you know, that someone just came along and put that extra sign out, you know, so there are issues, but I'll, I'll address it, I'll bring it up to the council.
How about, how about, oh, I'm sorry, how about saying that you can't have multiple signs that say the exact same thing? That would cut down a little bit of clutter.
Well, that's content.
Content, that's content, yeah.
You can't have identical signs, how about that? That isn't, that doesn't...
What's, what's the minimum fine for the, the signage thing?
Um, well...
Is it zero?
No. We have a minimum fine statute, we have classification of offenses, A, B, C, D, E, and F, E and F are city-created, and there's no minimum on those. But a Class A, I think, has a minimum of two-hundred-sixty-five, I'm sorry, has a presumptive fine amount of two-sixty-five. I think the minimum five might be, the minimum fine might be like a hundred and thirty-five or something like that.
But you said this is Class B?
Uh, it's Class B, Class A, under our code, is a, is a two-thousand-dollar fine, maximum.
Okay.
Class A, we amended it a couple of years back, is a maximum thousand dollars. But when you get a ticket, it has a presumptive fine amount on it, and it's, think for an A, it's two-sixty-five, and that's, you can turn a ticket over, sign it, send it in with your check for two-sixty-five, write your letter of explanation to the judge, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to do this, maybe you get some money back, but you can't get any more back than what the statutory minimum fine is, and I think that's like one-thirty-five or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we, uh, back to the exempted signs, we have directional signs are exempt, but the term has added, no more than one per parking lot entrance, no more than two and a half feet in height, no more than six square feet. Now, what this does, again, this is a con, this has got to be content neutral, so we can't say that it says, here's the entrance to the parking lot. You know, you can, at the entrance to your parking lot, you can have a sign that says, well, actually, directional sign, I, I withdraw that, directional sign for, for safety, yes, we can't, we can't say what the content is.
And we've defined directional signs as government signs, when, when they're placed by us, or required to be placed by us. So, that would, you know, be exempt, well, it, the whole purpose of government signs is to, you know, protect health and safety, and to allow you to implement rights.
Well, yes and no, as far as being a governmental sign, because there are signs, like, many businesses have a parking lot, and they're saying, you know, here's, here's the entrance with an arrow going in. The government isn't requiring that, the government isn't putting it up, it's, it's, you know, so I don't, I don't think that meets that definition of governmental sign. And we have for, like, uh, wayfinding, those are governmental signs. But, you know, like McDonald's has, you know, signs pointing the way in, and various other places do, too. I don't think that meets that definition of governmental sign.
When we do site planning, don't we require them to specify traffic control, directional things, things like that?
Traffic control, yes, but, you know, this isn't traffic control, it's, it's just an, an allowance for another sign, is what it is, and it, you know, that, um, some places have taken advantage of, and some places haven't. We don't require directional signs showing, this is how you get into the parking lot. There have been times in site plan review where we've made them put up, you know, right turn only signs, or, uh, you know, no left turn, and that kind of thing, leaving the parking lot, or do not enter if it's a, you know, it's a one-way, um, one-way driveway or something. But, beyond that, no. So... So, that's, one of the ways we try to limit them, is saying one per entrance. Uh, you know, some places have one on both sides of the driveway, for example, so it's just trying to reduce the number, and then we have limitation on the sides. Then moving on to flags, um, flags are exempt. Uh, we've added up to two per lot in a residential zone, and three per lot in a commercial zone, that's just a limitation on the number. And then, there is a, a provision here that says, provided any flag pole does not exceed the maximum building height in the underlying zone. That's put in, but we do have, uh, in the code elsewhere, in, actually, seventeen point five, two point two hundred, uh, the ordinance does allow flag poles to exceed the height limits. So, it, really, what I'm asking is choose, allow, allow or don't allow, to be, exceed the height limit in that zone.
My vote would be not to exceed the height limit in that zone.
What, in residential, or commercial?
Both.
Both?
Any, yeah. The, the absolute maximum in the city is forty-five feet, uh, but in residential zones, the height limit is thirty or thirty-five feet, in Taft, it's thirty-eight feet.
Do they have to be a minimum distance from power lines, or anything of that nature?
Um, it might be a building code issue, I'm not sure. It would be nice if it was, I, I know, in my youth, about six or eight people were electrocuted putting up a, a flag pole, it slipped, hit the power line.
Mm-hmm. I've, I've been near stories like that, that's why I ask. Is that something we can look into, make sure that there's a, a safety, because I know, I think that was one of the things with the flags being on the road, or the banner, flags, of them falling down into traffic, so they had to be a certain setback, so if they did fall, they wouldn't hit the power lines, or oncoming traffic.
And one thing we want to also, with, like, with flags, you want to have a, a minimum height, too, so they don't slap people in the face when they...
Yeah.
Well, and I think if you keep to the height limits within the zone, then you don't have the threat of a flag blocking someone else's view across the street, for example, if it's higher than the zone allowed, huh?
Or of the ocean.
Or of the ocean, right. And people are here for the view.
Then, we have another exemption for residential lots at which a garage sale, yard sale, state sale, or summer sale is being held, you get one sign of no more than four square feet, and one directional sign on private property of more than two square feet. And they have to be removed a day after the sale. Again, doesn't have to say garage sale, or yard sale, it's just saying, when you have a garage sale or yard sale, you get a, you get a, you get two signs.
Would this also fall under the Class B, if they didn't take them down appropriately?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
You know, I think the actual, de facto, use of garage sale signs is often, and I don't mind them, but, you know, I'll turn on a road, and there'll be a sign saying garage sale with an arrow pointing, I drive another block, and there's another garage sale with another arrow pointing the turn I need to take. So, often, there are several signs that lead up to where the garage sale actually is being held.
And almost all the time, those are in the public right-of-way and are illegal. If they're on a telephone pole, they're illegal, just so you know.
How about if they're on a standing pole tied to the, the power pole?
They're probably in the right-of-way and illegal.
Okay.
Then, exemption for government signs, exemption for window signs, subject to the design standards in the sign, in the zone in which the sign is located, and that last part is put in because some zones have a limitation on the amount of the window you can cover up with a sign.
One about when they paint pictures, and I'm thinking of the Sambo's Restaurant that often has pictures painted on the glass.
Um, I'm not sure whether that's in a pearl or not, I think it is, and I'm not, I'm not sure whether we have a limitation, again, on the amount of, in, in that particular spot, the amount of, uh, the window that can be covered, yeah, not just by signage, by anything.
Okay. So, are they legal then, or...
I, I can't give you an answer, they may well be legal, it's possible that it's illegal, again, it just depends on whether there's a limitation on the amount of the window that can be covered, not just by signage, but can be covered, period. So, because we, the idea behind that is we want to create interest for people, and they can look in the window and see that there's activity, or something interesting going on, creates life on the street, kind of thing. Uh, there is an exemption mentioned earlier for kites and windsocks, and then was struck the, the exemption for memorial signs or tablets, and motel unit signs, um, because it's covered elsewhere. Changed nameplates to resident signs, no larger than two square feet, and, uh, place signs are stricken, because that's covered by other things. We exempt real estate signs, subject to the size, number, and placement restrictions of this chapter, and it might, we might want to put a, a cross-reference in there, uh, the, for commercial, the limitations is on page seventeen of the document in front of you, and for residential, it's on page eighteen, but we may want to just put the, the cross-reference in for that.
So, fourteen, or seventeen may go.
Pardon me?
Oh, seventeen, the temporary, the election time signs might not appear in the next one, right?
Right.
And that one has four days, and other places, I think, don't, it says five, but...
If we leave it, we'll try to make it consistent, so, and we'll try to see what it is in the other, so...
Garage sale says one, so...
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's different. Because that's usually in somebody's, in your neighborhood, and, um, all kinds of traffic and stuff that goes with it, so you want to take them down pretty quickly. Then we exempt signs required by government agencies, you know, stricken government, or traffic in municipal signs, because that's covered by government signs. Then, uh, the next section, H, on temporary signs, saying a person may apply for a temporary sign permit without paying a permit fee, and so on. Originally, this was intended, I believe, Kate brought this up with me earlier, um, where, let's say you have a new business, and you haven't bought your permanent sign yet, you can get a temporary sign for free, and no permit fee. You can get a temporary sign for free and no permit fee for it. The, and you can have them for up to sixty days. What this is saying, the actual words, is that you can get a, if you haven't used up all your available signage, you can get a temporary sign for sixty days. Not about a new business or anything, it's just you get it. Again, to, because we want to be content neutral. We issued one recently for a political sign on a piece of property that hadn't used up its freestanding sign limitation. So they got a temporary sign permit.
I just hope we're not flooded with a lot of temporary signs for whatever reason, whether we have an election or not.
Well, there's a limitation on.
This would be, this is, has nothing to do with elections. This is, you can get it for sixty days, period. And up to two of them per year, I think.
Yes.
So.
I think for new businesses, this is, this is really good. We used it when we started up because it took some time to get our signs from Florida where they were made. And it was very helpful. It was very helpful.
One possibility we could, I'm sorry, one possibility we could do with this is just make it explicit, it's only in commercial zones.
I like that.
Does that at least dress as part of the loophole?
Because I would, I would think that residential is already covered with political construction and the small nameplate signage, right?
And garage sale.
And garage sale. So there's enough there to say what you'd want to say?
Then moving on to prohibited signs, just start a list and say flashing signs. We've defined flashing signs, so we don't need the terminology here, so it's proposed to strike it. And then added prohibition on moving signs, because we added a new definition on that. Signs on parked vehicles and then signs on natural objects. It had been saying signs on trees. Proposed to broaden that to, for, to be on trees or other vegetation or painted, printed or drawn upon a rock or other natural feature. And I added the term in its natural location principally because of, you think of like, somebody engraves a sign on a rock and that's their sign, you know, they, they go down to, you know, the rock store, a rock supplier and say, I want that molder. And they take it someplace and they sandblast it to etch the sign in it and that becomes their sign. That's on a rock, but it's not, you're not, it's not defacing a natural thing. And there's an example of them right across the street here at the, I think it's the motel, is it the Palace?
Palace, yeah, they have a big stone.
Yeah, they got a big stone that they put there and engraved. To me, I don't, that is not the intent of this, of this provision, not to reach that kind of thing. It was a.
Putting a sign on a tree that was already in your yard, is that prohibited? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Signs on trees, yes, would be prohibited.
You know, your edit in under B above your question about that, I think you could just strike that and end that sentence with be visible from a public right of way, period. Would that work?
Well, you know, you. It could be stricken because the next sentence talks about, you know, if you just have a sign on your vehicle, you know, it's like it's Joe's plumber always says Joe plumber on the sign. It happens to the van that he takes to do his plumbing repairs or whatever. That's one thing. And it's saying if that's incidental to the use of the vehicle, that's fine. But the idea is.
Can't park your car in a vacant lot with a sign on it and leave it there for six weeks.
Yeah, as, as people do at a couple of places in town here now. Actually, I suspect it's best to leave that in because it makes it really clear what we're trying to prohibit and the abuses that happen, so. I've got a, for some reason, I've got a duplicate on signs that imitate, interfere or they obstruct the view of traffic control signs. So I don't know why I got two of them there, but one will go away. And then the rest on that page is just essentially leaving what's there. Then there's a bunch of new prohibited signs to address some concerns. Inflatable signs are prohibited. Pennant strings and streamers prohibited. That's a new proposed prohibition. Signs that emit smoke, visible vapors, particulate matter, sound, odor or contain open flames. Signs that prevent free egress or egress from any door, window or fire escape or that prevent free access from one part of a roof to any other part. And that, that one obviously is about safety, particular fire safety. Reflective signs or signs that create, that contain mirrors. That's just to eliminate glare that can come from those signs. And then balloon signs would be prohibited as well. Then under the conditions and standards, the next section. It looks like a lot of changes, but it's, it's all grammatical. Trying to add clarity, try to, try to make it active voice and just make, make clear what's there. Same thing on the next page. In fact, all of the next page, it's all just.
Richard, on the bottom of fifteen on C, is that a typo there? I'm just not seeing the S struck out.
For extend? The S is struck out. Page sixteen, it's all. It's all just grammatical and so on. On properties for, this is for properties in commercial zones. Just added that you get, you get a sign for if the property is for sale or leased and it's just added the term in good faith. Then we're talking about portable signs, which again is the swinger signs, the A-frames and so on. Added a provision that says those signs cannot be supplemented with balloons, flags, ribbons, streamers or other attachments.
They often are.
Yeah, and a lot of times those are slappy in the face things too. Especially around here where we have so much wind. And then the rest of that paragraph is grammatical. We have a, the last paragraph on the page is we have a provision for additional temporary banner signs. This was something that was added during the recession to give businesses a chance to advertise a little more. I would propose to strike that. The recession's over, has been for some time and it's, it was, to the extent it was used. And it wasn't used that much. We don't think we issued very many of those. It's, you know, the, whatever the necessity was for it is over and it just would allow.
So that's on eighteen, number four at the top?
No, well, it carries, no. It's seventeen, number three at the bottom.
Oh, okay. Got it.
And number four at the top of the next page, that's, that's about people who have permits, seasonal permits, which typically are for fireworks sales or for Christmas tree sales. It's allowing signage at those sites. And it's just reworded for clarity. Then going down, there's a paragraph C. Added a couple of zones that have been added since the ordinance was written. So this is, this is intended to address all residential zones. So it's adding the VR zone, the vacation rental zone and the R1RE, the roads end zone as well.
Richard, I have a question. So the general, we say that garage sale signs and election time signs have to be removed within four days after the sale or the election or whatever. But we, does the city have anything that says, okay, this restaurant had a sign up. It is now moved or it's gone out of business, but the sign for it remains? That would help us get rid of that sign?
No, you know, we've thought about that. Actually Deb had really wanted that, but called it an abandoned sign. The problem is you have to look at the content to know whether the business is still there or not.
That could be determined pretty easily, I would think.
One thing we might be able.
Well, if a sign says, says, you know, eat at Joe's, Joe's long gone. How do you know that that sign is an abandoned sign? Well, you've got to look at it. What does it say? It talks about Joe's. Where's Joe? Joe's gone, so it must be an abandoned sign.
It's a content.
It's a content.
But one thing that we probably could do that would help is to make sure we're enforcing the maintenance requirements on signs and have some kind of, something about needs to, you know, no faded paint, no peeling paint, you know, nothing about it that would be dilapidated. Then whoever owns that sign is going to have to keep putting money into the sign and would eventually then want to take it down if it doesn't advertise anything useful or say, give an important message.
Would that also apply to signs that are vandalized and have graffiti on them or something?
I would think so.
Well, we have graffiti ordinance on that. We do have a provision about sign maintenance. Has to be in a clean and inoffensive condition and free and clear of obnoxious substances, rubbish and weeds. And then about unsafe signs. Now, in fact, you.
What if I'm offended by it being abandoned?
Sorry?
What if I'm offended by it being abandoned? That doesn't count.
We need to work on that. But down in Taft, remember the pines? The pines burned. Their sign is still there. Half of their sign is still there. Another half of it had, had gotten quite dangerous and actually we sent a, the city street crew removed it because it was, it was dangerous and posed a real risk to pedestrians or to vehicles as well in strong wind.
So is there something about its appearance now that is objectionable? I haven't seen it lately. I haven't paid attention.
No, not now.
Does it look acceptable?
I haven't been down actually to that in a couple of.
Well, I mean, because we can regulate appearance of signs, we just can't regulate what they say.
Sure, sure, sure.
Some months ago, we got a complaint about a sign in, I guess it's Ocean Lake, for a pizza place that's not there anymore. And people have been looking for it. They found the sign, pulled into the shopping center and there's no pizza place. And that, you know, we should take them down.
It's kind of, yeah, again, it's like we're a tourist town. It'd be best to have our signs act as accurate as possible, but that, yeah, it's hard to control that.
And you know, you, you know, some places have tried to do it, you know, if, if you go out of business, you have to take your sign down in X period of time. Well, chances are they've gone off into the night somewhere and, you know, who, who are you going to get to take it down? It could be.
There is a company though, I think I've seen Ramsey Sign Company that works in Lincoln City. And the old Sip and Sand Restaurant is empty, but they turn the faces on it so that they keep up the sign. And I'd bet that sign's been there for twenty-five years with.
Property of Ramsey Signs on it, yeah.
So who, who owns it and is this revised ordinance capable of telling them, take the sign down already? It's.
No, it's not. As long as the sign's well maintained, you know, we don't care if it says Sip and Sand or Ramsey Signs or, you know, Vote For Me or I Like Beer or whatever.
But when the, okay, there are, we still have a requirement in here that the size of the sign is based on the structure.
Right, if an attached sign like that one is, is based on the amount of business frontage open to the public. So your, basically your front wall of your building, if, you know, if that's where the public enter through, you get one square foot of attached signage for every lineal foot of business frontage you have.
So if a place is no longer open to the public, is the sign no longer permitted? It's not content based?
Right.
I suppose it tends to be the, is it the freestanding signs that are really the issue for?
It's signs that are, I guess, would be misleading to what's available for tourists since we are a tourist-based town. I think it would be best to give everybody some clearer information and not clutter, you know, what's being said out there with stuff that means nothing anymore. I'm just, I'm just curious. And this is a tough one with the content based stuff. But is that a legitimate question? I mean, if the business is out of business, the sign is no longer permitted. They're not allowing people in.
Yeah, like if it's closed, you could, conceivably we could say if, like if a business, if, if a building is closed for so many continuous days, then it's no longer open to the public and then it becomes a non-conforming sign.
Or the permit is linked to the business being operating.
Yes.
In operation, yeah.
The sign is allowed contingent of being in operation?
I can see the argument, okay, my business isn't open anymore, but I still care who you vote for. Or I still care, or the soft drink company is going to pay me, you know, a hundred bucks a month to let them advertise on my sign out front.
But that, if it's contingent on being an operating business, then that wouldn't be allowed.
What, again, we get back to the issue, what difference does it make if we allow it for an operating business, why not allow it for anything?
For what? Why not allow it for anything?
So that would apply to anything. So if, if it's not functioning anymore as intended when it started, I mean, I'm thinking more along business, commercial. I'm not thinking of, of any of these temporary signages or anything. I'm thinking solely of signage that's out there that no longer serves its intended purpose.
In your mind, that's the problem. It's just getting, you get to the content and I understand exactly what you're saying and I agree, it's a problem. I don't know that there's a solution to it.
Whiteout squad.
Could you put something in, for example, if a sign is now non-conforming or it's old and such and the business closes, why can't you force the owner of the sign to take it down if it's not being used continuously?
Well, if sign is non-conforming, that's one issue. And actually, you could put a provision in the code that non-conforming signs. And actually, you could put a provision in the code that non-conforming signs have to be amortized and removed after a certain period of time. And that's, Laker Swigler went through that, I think they had a seven-year amortization period, and as of seven years after they, they enacted the amortization thing, all the signs had to come down. And that went to the Oregon Supreme Court and was upheld. As for the sign is not being used, again, you've got to look at it and say, is that sign being used?
Well, if you looked at it, it is. If you looked at it, it is. I mean, technically.
Yeah, yeah.
You've just used the sign.
Like the pines sign, it still says the pines, and karaoke tonight, or whatever, and there's no, there's no building there. And, you know, you could, but looking at it, you can tell, obviously, it's not being used, but, you know, you've got to read it to know whether it's being used.
So the only thing we have-
Yeah, we were using it, actually, for a while, the city was using that sign, actually the part that was, ended up being removed, to advertise the glass-blowing studio.
So basically, it's just the beauty, we're keeping things fresh-looking and up, well-kept, you know, functional, the lights work, there's not wiring hanging off, the wood's not rotten, paint's not peeling off.
Broken.
Not broken. So that's all, that's about what we have to-
That's a parameter that we can operate in.
Yes.
Yeah, we can require them to be well-maintained, and again, if, if you want to go into removing non-conforming signs after a period of time, you can do that too. There is a very large number of non-conforming signs in the city.
And some of them are very large.
Pardon?
And some of them are very large.
Yes, and some of them are very large, and very important to their owners, and so that, it's just whether the political will, political will is there to require them to be removed.
What was your, what are the changes you're recommending to the ordinance in regard to non-conforming signs?
Well, the, that's on the, on the last page, page twenty-one. Well, twenty and twenty-one, twenty, I tweaked the existing version. On twenty-one, I proposed an alternative provision that, that doesn't allow the structural maintenance, essentially. What we allow now is, if you have a, a sign being held up, a wooden, by a wooden four-by-four, and it gets rotten, you can put in a new wooden four-by-four. You can't put in a steel pole for it, but you can put in a wooden four-by-four forever.
See, I like your alternative, and I would get rid of the old one. I like the version you have on page twenty-one.
Okay.
Or page twenty-eight.
Or is that supposed to be in addition to?
No, it's, it's alternative. At the very least, if, if we stay with the one on page twenty, is, propose some changes to it. In particular, one where it talks about where the cost of repair of a non-conforming sign exceeds 50% of the cost of replacing the sign, and so on, with a conforming sign. You know, what's a conforming sign? Which sign is con, is conforming? You know, it can cost, like I say here, anywhere from $20 to $200,000 for a conforming sign. If you go by the casino out of Highway 18, that huge changing image sign there, my understanding is that was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for that sign.
Yes, those are expensive.
Yeah. And you can see it, you know, from a mile away, and that's the intent, you know, but-
And if they can rent it for an image for 10 seconds, every 10 seconds, it probably is pretty valuable even at that cost.
But, you know, that, that's one extreme of the cost of a, a conforming sign. You can say, yeah, well, it costs, if you do a changing image sign, it's going to cost you X thousands of dollars, or, you know, you can go down to the store and, and, you know, pick up a, you know, a piece of plastic for $5.95, that's a conforming sign too, so. I did, the, the, my point is that provision is meaningless. And, at the very least, it needs to go away. My personal recommendation is, I like the, I like the alternative myself.
No, I do too. I agree with you on that, yeah.
Back to, back to page eighteen. Most of the changes are there, are just either reflect changes in definitions without really change in substance, or for grammatical purposes. One thing is item number seven, actually number six, talks about lighting provided for the above signs must be indirect. Number seven is below that, so it is, seems to be saying that you can have, for, for a non-residential use in a residential zone, you know, there was something like a church or a school, for example, you can have an internally illuminated sign. And I don't know whether that's intentional, the way that is, is done now, but that's the effect. You can't, you can have an internally illuminated sign, so like a message board, whether it is electronic or manually changed, you know, where you change the individual letters. I don't know that it's a bad idea that we allow internally illuminated signs for a non-residential use in a residential zone. Drawing your attention to that, that provision.
I've walked around some pretty cool neighborhoods in Portland, you don't have to go far, and you've got some of the mixed-use stuff going on with residential, you know, it's just kind of all jammed in there. And they've got, you know, the older marquee internally lit signs, they're not, they're not terrible, they don't blind you, they're not, they're less offensive than ones that have directed lighting. Sometimes those can get knocked out with the wind, and all of a sudden, you have a, a beam in your window. I, I don't mind them. I think they're pretty simple. They, they seem easy to maintain as well, for the most part.
And then, paragraph D at the bottom of the page, saying that you can have a sign over a street or alley up to 24, protrude into a street or alley, which is over the public right-of-way, by up to 24 inches, except for Highway 101. And I put in language that says unless authorized by the Oregon Department of Transportation, because on my list of things to do is working out a memorandum of understanding between the city and ODOT about sidewalks, along Highway 101, where, so we can have weather protection structures over the sidewalk, which is in the right-of-way, so pedestrians can walk under that and be out of the rain, and also, so we can have some of these signs that stick out over the sidewalk.
I want concern would be obstructing views of people who are making left or right turns onto 101. Be very careful with that.
Yeah, it would only, I think we would want to have, typically, we want to have minimum of eight feet up, and basically just blade signs sticking out, not, nothing on the, at the ground level that would block vision. But that's a good point. And, that's about it. On, on page nineteen, we have a provision that says carved signs don't have to pay a permit fee.
I like that.
That was put in many years ago when they were encouraging, wanted to encourage carved signs.
I think carved signs are really, really attractive, but they're rare, yeah.
If we want to keep it, that's fine, but I think one thing, technology has changed, and you can have things that look like carved signs that aren't, and-
Maybe it should say hand-carved? Is that more specific?
What about artisan carved signs, or something?
Well, I'm, what I was, my point was, there are some really good-looking signs that look like they're carved.
Carved with hand tools?
And so, if-
Oh, I see what you mean, okay, yeah.
Because they're done by computer, and they're, they're cast in resin. I think, I don't even know, I think like most of the city park signs, I'm not sure if they're wood anymore or not.
So if somebody can afford to have a carved sign, they can afford to get a permit, then I would think.
Well, if, if we want to continue that exemption, I'm saying, well, maybe we want to make it a little bit broader.
Or just delete C.
Or delete it, yeah, you could delete it too.
I think deleting it would be easier.
I agree.
The cost of, the permit cost is still pretty low.
A hundred, $100.
$100 for a sign permit.
That's not-
Is pretty close to nominal, but, you know, for some startups, it's a concern.
But that's when the temporary permits come in, give you some time to earn some money via a sign.
And then, on the, we have sign maintenance, about the premises, and then about the, about unsafe or unlawful signs. Now, if you want, you know, what I heard earlier is, you would like to have more on just maintaining, beyond unsafe, just sign maintenance itself, really keep the sign neat and not faded, not peeling, that kind of thing. Is that, is there a consensus on that?
Yes.
Most of the rest of the changes are grammatical, not-
Well, thank you, Richard. Any other further questions of Richard about the sign? Okay. So what, what is the schedule for this? This will be revised and go to the city-
It'll come back to you for a public hearing on November 6th, and the city council on November-
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
All right. There's no other old business, no new business? Any planning commission training tonight?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Any reports and comments from staff?
No, not right now.
City attorney? From our commissioners? And the next, the agenda for our next meeting is going to be-
We have two things, one on the visioning. Expect to have that back for your continued deliberations, and then a discussion on the coastal resilience project, and the Tsunami, tsunami evacuation, facilities improvement plan, better known as the TFIP.
Have we gotten some of those reports in yet, that we've been waiting on?
Yes, we have. We, we have one for Cutler City, and on the 16th, we'll be talking about a schedule for setting up some meetings to, for neighborhood meetings. And the Dogami and DLCD have made a special effort to, and committed to getting the rest of our maps for other areas by November, so that we can hold meetings in November and December on those.
Fantastic.
Thank you. The meeting is dismissed, adjourned.
Dismissed. Home.